The school board pursuant to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one A, colon two, Roman three B. The governor's executive order twenty thousand twenty dash zero four, section eight, and emergency order number twelve, section three. Just a couple of things again, if we're not talking, if you could turn off your mics, that would help with the rest of us here. At the beginning of the meeting, we have to do a roll call and let folks know whether there's anybody with us. This is obviously Mike Kennison, nobody with me.
Elizabeth McKinney, nobody with me.
Kim Shelton, no one with me.
I couldn't unmute myself, apology scary, Swanson, I'm alone.
Amy Tilton alone.
Susan Gibbons, I'm alone.
Erica MacNeil, I'm alone.
Sean Pine.
Jenna Mellon, I'm alone.
Dave Dalton, all by myself.
That's a song from the seventies. Yeah, so it looks like we have everybody here and Susan, I didn't get any public comment by email. Did you receive any?
I had no one request to speak on the agenda tonight, no.
Okay, and so we have non-public session there. I don't know if we have any items to discuss in non-public tonight, so. We'll forego that and then I guess, Susan, I guess we'll get right into the the school reopening update. That was in the in the materials. The proposed update from this proposal from the state steering committee. Take it away.
Okay. So the the proposal before you tonight is the recommendation from the steering committee. And you know, just to remind everyone that back in May, there was a steering committee and five working groups that were established that included multiple stakeholders, so. Students, staff, administration, community members, parents were all, you know, part of each of these groups and they met weekly, sometimes twice a week. And they reviewed surveys that were sent out to students, staff and parents. In some cases, there were multiples that were sent out. And also guidelines, you know, from CDC, from the state, you know, from public health, from some of our school associations that also published information, search certainly athletics and IAA. Any any guidance that we could get that pertained to, you know, school reopening was was read, shared and discussed. And also, we looked at information from schools who reopened in Europe this past spring to see what kinds of measures they put in place and what the results were. And we also look back at, you know, when the SARS outbreak occurred, you know, what schools and countries did in order to be able to open and provide learning experiences for kids in a safe and healthy environment. So a lot of background work was, you know, took place, conversations, you know, and on all levels were were part of this process. So. There were five working groups, you know, teaching and learning, student support services, health and wellness operations and student family and community life. And included on those work groups were sixteen parents, seven paraprofessionals and tutors, twenty-five teachers, eleven students, administrators and other members of our community, including our SRO, LinkedIn, the rec department. So, you know, certainly want to give a shout out to all eighty-one people who comprise the steering committee and those work groups for the tremendous effort they've put forward in order to bring forward this recommendation. So what the steering committee did is they took guidance from these various groups and put together this plan based on their insights and recommendations in their various areas. And that's what's before you tonight. I'd also like to, you know, just say that, you know, there's many layers of planning involved in trying to reopen schools and, you know, looking at data and making choices and decisions based on facts and and information that we gather is really, you know, paramount and being able to provide a mindful reflective plan that meets the needs of, you know, the learning community here in Newmarket. So. You know, what's what's happened is that we've gathered information, we've communicated back the results. You know, we've done some work, we've communicated back out, you know, where we're at and what we've learned, and then we've listened some more, you know, to our community and our our staff and and then, you know, here we are with, you know, the next iteration of planning. If this is approved tonight, then tomorrow we'll send out surveys to families and on Thursday, we'll have meetings with staff to review the information that we're sharing here tonight and we'll do the same with families so that, again, we're communicating out, we're gathering information, we'll use that information so that we can go to the next level of planning. So it's just really a an iterative process. I know sometimes when when you're working with really complicated, challenging situations that it can be frustrating because, you know, you want answers to things that are maybe, you know, three layers deeper than where we're at. But we will get there if we all kind of work together towards our common goal of of trying to safely find ways to open schools in another month or so. So I just wanted to give that little background orientation, you know, before we begin, you know, decisions throughout this process have been based on the physical, social and emotional well-being of staff and students. As well as how can we take what we learned from our experience in the spring and improve upon the the teaching experience, teaching and learning experiences that that we are going to be offering here when we open school. So again, you know, safety is first and foremost, and to do this requires support and cooperation from from everyone, from students, parents, staff, administration, the board, town officials. You know, it requires all of us to be able to make some changes to the way that we're accustomed to doing things and sometimes that can be hard. And, you know, we're going to do our best to provide structure and clarity each step along the way and do our very best to open schools in a in a safe and orderly fashion. So. Tonight, members of the steering committee will share our decision tree and our learning options, health and safety measures that will be in place or needs to be need to be in place in order for us to open schools safely. Some tactical matters that I think are important for parents to to know and understand. You know, some information about teaching and learning and what that will look like in the upcoming year to the best of our ability to plan at this point. And then, you know, we'll share some final thoughts. So that's, you know, you have the document before you and we're just going to kind of walk through each section. And if you have a question in a in any section, you know, we'll we'll take pause and certainly entertain any questions so that we you don't have to just listen along the way and and, you know, put put your questions in a parking lot. I think it's a lot easier to process if you have the opportunity to ask questions when they when they come to mind. So. Having said that, Sean's going to walk us through the learning options and the transition plan portion of the proposed reopening plan.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having the steering committee here to help kind of guide everyone through the process that we got to in making our decision regarding school for the twenty twenty-one school year. I'm just, I I'm assuming you have your document in front of you. I'm looking on page three. There's a model of the decision tree that we use to kind of help guide our conversation, if you will, and, you know, and use the information from the various groups that were put together to help us come up with this plan. Just kind of give you an overall feeling that we know that the state has already come out and said that, you know, we can, each district has their own ability to form their plans and that, you know, they feel that it's safe for schools to be open. So if you're kind of looking at the decision tree model, so we kind of moved over to, we're at the, wait for that. Thank you, Dr. Gibbons. So, you know, the state said that we have the authority to proceed the way we thought was the most beneficial for the students in our district, taking into safety protocols and obviously the information that has been rapidly coming to us. So the state did go with that. So we are now consulting with you. We worked with the steering committee, took information from the CDC, various health organizations. We consulted and looked at some other plans and other districts have proposed as well. And right now, we're kind of on to the point that, you know, we have majority of our stakeholders and families feel that if we take proper protocols, that we can, you know, they would be interested in having their children participate in school in some fashion this year. So if you kind of progress over in that decision tree, you know, we did a survey in June. At that time, eighty-two percent of the people, the community, said they feel comfortable returning school, again, provided we have the protocols in place for health and safety. Eighteen percent did not. Based on the current conditions, not only in Newmarket, but in the state of New Hampshire, in most of the northeast region, you know, we've luckily have been pretty stable, unlike other parts of the country. So based on the information that we're given in the recommendations from the various groups, the steering committee is proposing that we do open schools. We are looking to open school on September eighth. The opening would not be solely for on-campus learning. It would give an option to families either to be have their children participate on campus in the bricks and mortar setting or in a remote learning environment. We felt that there's circumstances that we know that all families have in making choices in terms of how they want to proceed with the education. We thought that, you know, one model is not necessarily the best way to go, saying everyone has to go bricks and mortar. We thought that it would be much better to give families the choice. There will be, we already know that, you know, from June, that eighteen percent weren't really comfortable with sending their their kids back to school. If you, the board, the plans to approve this after the presentation tonight, as Dr. Gibbons had mentioned earlier, we'll send out an additional survey to parents. That survey would basically ask parents, what would they like their children to do? Do they want to be part of the traditional classroom setting? And we'll get into detail of what that will look like in terms of the health and safety and the protocols further on. Or would they like their children to have a remote learning opportunity? We're asking them to supply an answer for if they have more than one child, for each child that they have. So. You know, maybe they've, their their high schooler wants to be in bricks and mortar, but they don't feel comfortable sending the third grader to school. So that's something that we'll be putting out. We're looking to get kind of quick turnaround for the board and maybe people who are tuning into this meeting. We need the participation. We need those numbers as soon as possible so we can make sound decisions and start forming the classes for this coming school year. It's also important to remember that, you know, obviously, our number one priority is the health and safety of everyone that's going to be in the buildings. And there may be a time when it gets to the point where it's no longer feasible to be in the buildings due to, you know, maybe we unfortunately have an uptick in coronavirus. So we would look to make a transition for remote learning for all. That said, traditionally, you know, flu season kind of peaks, starts to come ramp up on us in November, end of November, December. We think it is going to be probably highly likely that we will probably have to transition at some point between Veterans Day on. Just because if, you know, the flu is coming out, flu has similar symptoms. You know, the temperature, the shortness of breath, similar symptoms to COVID, there's no real distinct way that we can, you know, we as a district can decide, oh, that's the flu and that's COVID. So, you know, most likely, it would happen between that time period, but if not, you know, we'll keep, we'll keep with the bricks and mortar as we're going. You know, so that's what we have been taking a look at so far and that's the kind of the first part that are options and transition. I think that having the two options for families is something that is, I would highly recommend and I know the committee recommends as well. Because again, we know we have some families perfectly, you know, comfortable or I should say mostly comfortable sending their children back and others are not. And we felt that it's important that the students in Newmarket get an education with the teaching staff that we have on have on hand and not have to go to either V-Lax or something on that lines.
Sean, I was wondering if you could just briefly kind of go through some of the some of the decision metrics. Well, first, let me say that this is a great plan, I think, overall, very well thought out and I appreciate you and everyone else's put into it. I was wondering if you could kind of go over some of the the pros and cons of maybe the different types of learning options. So for instance, if we went remote, it'd be the safest option, but I think there's some downsides to it that people need to understand as well as if we decided to go, say fifty percent hybrid where half the kids came in at a time, what would be the?
Yeah, I think, you know, th- those are options that I know a few districts are doing that, particularly at the middle school, high school level. I know other districts have also done, some districts have been doing that at elementary. I just think that when you're you're splitting that time fifty-fifty, we kind of felt that it isn't a consistent learning experience for kids. You know, we want the kids in the buildings as much as we possibly can because that's going to give us a better opportunity to connect and make those relationships with students. Because, you know, unfortunately, I think there will be a time in which we're going to have to transition to remote, maybe for a little while. It could be for the remainder of the year, Gary. But, you know, that back and forth part, we didn't feel gives that consistency that kids need. They've they've been out for a good part portion of the year from, you know, the middle of March until June. They need that structure. They need they need to be able to make that bond with their new teachers. They need to be able to make the bond with their new classmates. Quite frankly, we need to have the opportunity to see truly where all these kids are at because of that remote environment, because everyone had a different experience. Some some families were fortunate enough to be able to provide a really good opportunity for their kids in a remote environment. Others did not. Some kids thrived, others did not. So. We want to get them back in so we can see, okay, where we're at. Where are these kids at in terms of academics? The social emotional needs for them, it's a high-stress environment for, you know, families, but for children as well. And we just thought that it is the best thing to do is to get them in, have them in as much as we possibly can in this plan. And, you know, that, I just, the fifty-fifty split, I I don't really know if that's actually a a a more safe way to take it. And I think that's what the committee was saying too, because you're going to have kids in there for fifty percent of the time and when they're gone, what are they doing? You know, are they fully participating in the remote learning? Are they also being exposed possibly in other scenarios and bringing that back to school? This way, I think we're kind of keeping that to a minimum as well.
And I also think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a teacher really can't teach a whole curriculum to half students at a time because I think you just, it's not practical.
Very much so. I would agree with that, Gary.
I had one question about the delayed start time. My, I think it makes total sense. My only question is, do we need to possibly extend that even more because there could be a fair level of training and setup that the staff needs to engage in and I'm not sure they'd have enough days to do it. Just my thought.
Yeah, so most of the school districts around, based on my conversations with superintendents, are starting at this time. On average, based on my conversation last Thursday, schools are are providing anywhere between five and nine days with teachers prior to that. Also, when we get further along in the plan, you'll see, as most are doing, you know, that we're proposing a four-one model so that one day a week would be for planning and we can also provide additional professional development and and time together to be able to, you know, modify what we're doing and enhance the experience, you know, for kids because we'll be able to, as Sean said, establish these relationships, be able to see what's working well. If, you know, additional interventions are needed, then we can have the time to thoughtfully plan for that. So, you know, I think one of the things in that we've learned, I think, across the country is how much more school, how much more learning occurs in school besides ABCs and one-two-threes, right? It's, you know, it's one thing to be able to complete an assignment. It's a whole nother matter to learn. And so deeper learning occurs when hu- human beings get together and their various experiences can be drawn out to enhance the learning of the peers around them. Peer learning is a is an important part in a of of the learning that happens in schools and it's really difficult to be able to replicate that in the same way when kids are not together. So, you know, we always say as educators, there's teachable moments and and those are, you know, moments that happen in the classroom, you know, when you're engaging with one another on a topic that causes you to veer off in a direction that you wouldn't, you didn't necessarily plan. But those are the, those are the moments that you get a hook into kids, you know, you start having, you know, engaging conversations about something because it becomes relevant to them in a way. When you're, you know, all of us have seen, it's not the same when we connect virtually. I can't keep a an eye on everybody on the screen to see, you know, body language and, you know, you know, you know, where people are at. Are you nodding? Do you have your hand up? Because I can't see everybody's hand and we're, you know, and so you can't respond in the same human way that you can when kids are in place. So. For us, you know, I know many school districts and talking to other superintendents are going with some of these rotations and some are doing AMPM's. And the reason why they're doing that is because their circumstances are different than ours. Here in Newmarket, we have new buildings, we have pretty good-sized classrooms and we have relatively small class sizes. The other school districts that are doing rotating schedules don't have that. They have smaller, older buildings and they have much larger class sizes. So for them to be able to social distance and get their class sizes down small enough, they have to double their classroom space. Now, we don't have to do that to accomplish social distancing and implement these safety measures. So, you know, our plan is based on what we can do here and to maximize the contact time between teachers and students and to the extent that it's safe to do so. And so that's really what the thinking was behind, you know, introducing this idea of having, you know, two tracks. You can, if you, if if it's unsafe for your child or your family to attend here, then we don't want to put anyone in an unsafe unsafe situation because if 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 children don't feel safe, the learning's not going to happen, you know, whether it's online or in classrooms. And so safety has to drive everything that we do and not just physical safety, psychological safety. You know, and we also have to make sure that staff stay safe. So all of those things are kind of baked into the thinking around this proposal just before you tonight.
Susan, a couple, couple, just want to follow up that question. So the 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 idea under this proposed plan would be that students would arrive for a first day on September eighth, but I gather staff will be there days in advance in preparation. Is that right?
Yes, so the staff's starting date remains the same. So we had three days already in. Yes, so the staff's starting date remains the same, so we have three days already in, uh, on our calendar. For, for teachers to come in, this would give us an additional five days, so that puts us at eight. Um, I think Exeter is at nine, and most others are around five, based on what I heard from the superintendents the other day. And then, like I said, every Friday, we also will have every week, every Friday, um, available for additional, um, training, support and planning.
One, one, just one, one more point, um, somewhat related to this is that, um, uh, and I know it's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's weeks off. But is there any, uh, merit to considering rolling kids in, for instance, a third, a third, a third? Because we're going to be implementing safety measures to sort of, um, rather than having everyone show up on the same day. Um, sort of have a, you know, a, a portion of the student body show up, and then another, and then another on a rolling days basis, does that make any sense? So, we, we get staff and everyone accustomed to the onboarding procedures that we're going to have?
We haven't gotten down to that level of detail, Mike, um, but part of this plan is that the first week of school. It would be a soft start for students anyways, so the first week that the kids are here, we're not going to just jump into academic learning. That first week is going to be a soft start, and it's going to be the same kind of idea, um, that we. We're proposing to staff, you know, um, as you know, from later in the report, we'll talk about having devices. Well, we didn't have devices one to one for everyone, well, we didn't have time to show folks how to use the tools that we were going to, uh, be using. And so they'll be training for, for students, and, you know, we'll be going through the new routines, you know, so that they get used to this, uh, new, new. Uh, the new norms, so, well, and we'll, we'll have some activities that will help develop relationships and connection, and. You know, I think, you know, there'll be some planning during that month, if, if it's safe to return to, to do something for, um. You know, the eighth graders and the fifth graders, they didn't have their moving up ceremony, so the, the, uh, um, student life group is looking at that. But we haven't gotten that far along in the planning, but, you know, perhaps it does make sense, I know, I've heard of a couple of school districts doing that, most, most. Seem to be just bringing kids back, um, hopefully they're doing a soft start like we're, we're proposing here.
Thank you.
Sean, this is Amy, I had a couple of questions for you, um, so will the curriculum be the same for both remote learning and in person? Because I'm wondering if, say, someone starts as an in person and, um. May have been exposed at home to COVID and has to go back into remote, will they be able to just pick up remote easily? At the same point?
Yeah, I, um, to answer that, Amy, I, I think that's one of the purposes of why we're proposing a four one model. Is so grade levels can be together and kind of in sync of what they're teaching and when they're teaching it. Because if, for instance, if I was a third grade student and I had to quarantine for fourteen days. They're going to have to transition to that r- remote environment, so we would want to make sure that. I'm walking into that remote environment and can pick right up, so we don't have that gap in, oh, they, they haven't gotten there yet. Or they're, they're ahead of me, so we're going to try to keep the pacing as much as possible. Uh, a- at the grade levels consistent, just for that sort of reason as well, plus those teachers who are remote. Going to be instructing the remote part when we determine who they are, um, you know, that's another day on that, on that. Day that we are set aside for, uh, on, for the prepping for the teachers. That'd be a chance for that teacher to also come into the building and work with the grade level teacher, so they're not isolated, you know? Doing their own thing out, uh, out, without consulting with the, their grade level peers.
Okay, that was my second question, would the remote teachers be the main instructors for the whole remote program?
Right, and i- i- and, you know, this is the plan that we have here, and inevitably, we have to get our numbers to see. How many remote we're actually going to need, right, and how many we don't. Plus, uh, Amy, i- i- I, I think that if we start to see that uptick i- in the kids. Becoming sick or parents not comfortable with it and wanting to go remote, that could be a trip, well, I don't want to say trip factor. But that could be an indicator that maybe we need to move to that remote environment for everyone, so.
Makes sense, sorry, Amy, um, it might make sense if, um, you know, communication is going to be key to all of it, as it always is. But, you know, with the whole concept of potentially going all remote in November. Um, you know, it might help if, if we have some scenarios for people to understand what might trigger that, and what might allow us to come back. Obviously, there could be a million and one scenarios, but just some things so people can know what we're looking for, and Amy, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
That's okay, so. Can I just ask this, I have one more question, um, on the, um. The flu activity piece you put in here, I guess I'm concerned about that, because I. The flu, the regular flu and the coronavirus are two different things, so if. If someone has the flu, they typically would be sent home anyways, and they could be tested, and we could clearly. You know, figure out what their illness is, so why would we go remote? All remote if someone just has the flu opposed to Corona, I'm, I don't get this.
Go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, so, so the thinking here is just, it's not that we automatically will go. It's, it's to say that when the flu season, when there's an uptick in the flu season, oftentimes the symptoms are similar.
Right.
And knowing how humans react in these types of situations, being super sensitive and worried. That there's a certain point at which it will not be practical to continue, because if a, a, a significant. Portion of either staff or students, um, feel uncomfortable coming in, because they don't know whether it's COVID or the flu or, or, or whatever. It might be more practical to just go to remote, because we, at a certain point, there, there's, there'll be a tipping point. We don't know what that is yet, I, I will say that I did have a conversation with our public health, um, director. And, uh, and I had asked him, can you provide us with, you know, what, what might that look like? What would be these like trigger points, um, for closure? And so we don't have all those details worked out, we just know, at least right now, that at any point that becomes, you know, unsafe. That we will transition, and we're just trying to give people an understanding of when that trigger might happen, kind of in a more organic way. What, one of the things that was, I think, extremely difficult and traumatizing for, for folks is that. Um, this, this came upon us so suddenly that we had to be reactionary. And so this is a way to be able to signal that there's going to be a point in time, it's highly likely. That we're going to have to shift to a remote model entirely, and this could very well be the time that that happens. To give people a mental image, so that, you know, the transition doesn't feel so out of the blue. You know what I mean, not, not as abrupt, and, and for, for, for psychological reasons. We felt it was important to say, hey, we know this as educators, we know that flu season. I, I mean, sometimes flu season will get so bad, you have to have a closure anyways, never mind COVID. But if, if kids are coughing, if they have fevers, and there's a, you know, a bunch of students that are coming to our buildings with these symptoms. Then they're not going to be able to enter the buildings anyways, and then at a certain point, it's just not going to be practical to continue to provide on campus learning. And so we just thought, you know, flu season, as with colleges and universities, they're saying the same thing, you know? Once they leave, you know, for, for the Thanksgiving holiday, that they're not going to be returning, so. Um, you know, this again, it's, it's just, it's just a way to be able to help parents, um, understand. You know, um, and staff for that matter, that, that, that we're thinking about these things, that we acknowledged, you know, um, that. That this flu season is going to come, and we're not going to know if it's COVID or not, and, and so, um, at a certain point, it won't be practical. And therefore we'll make the shift, and we'll try to do it in a way that's not traumatizing, like happened the last time, if at all possible.
Like, like, I think, Kim, you said before, there are myriad scenarios that can happen, and, and it just, you know, from a layperson's point of view. We, with regard to that time of the year, Amy, I think your point's a good one, you can go get a flu test, but that might not necessarily rule out. Having Corona as well, I don't know if you can have both of them.
Well, I'm sure they would test for both at this point, you know?
Right, but I tip, flu tests at least typically come back quicker, I think, than Corona tests, so that, that would be the, the thing, so you, you know. Um, you wouldn't, you, the timing might be an issue, if you have lots of people and lots of outstanding tests, it's, it's probably going to create some, some concern. And, um, but I, I, what I, the big takeaway, I, you know, from this part of it is, it's not a, it's not necessarily a will do. Um, but it's just giving folks a heads up that, you know, because let's say, I'm, I'm, I'm reading that a lot, um, that the, the CDC is saying it. Um, not only will the flu come back at that point, but more likely it'll be an uptick in COVID as well, so.
And then, uh, just to reiterate, in this, if we did happen to go remote, it wouldn't be for the entire rest of the year, it would be until such time that we feel comfortable reopening. The building.
Yeah, I, it, it, it could be that things are well and we can bring kids back, I mean, we, our, our preference, you know, as educators, to have kids here. But before we can have kids here, we have to all feel safe, and that just requires all of us to make some modifications to how we go about. Um, you know, keeping people safe, we, you know, we cohort some of the other things in the plan. Erica is going to go over with us, you know, some of the safety, uh, components of, of the plan, how we, um, are going to approach, um, safety. And that, that will be the next section, if we don't have any other questions on this particular part, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
Susan, I just wanted to say one more thing, sorry, um, I just, I'm glad that you, um, in response to Kim's question about the reopening date. I think it's great to remind the public that this is basically a once, it's not a one size fits all plan. And just like we talked about flu season, it's a trigger, it could happen, and I'm glad that you're talking about that, we have a smaller school. We don't have, you know, compared to say Portsmouth or Hampton, so things that we necessarily do, they may not be doing and vice versa. So, that's really important to reiterate throughout this whole process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Erica, you're up.
All right, so we are on page four, about halfway down in the health and safety section. Um, so all staff and students will be required to wear masks when they are on our campus and also on our buses. Um, this is looking to provide, um, some reusable cough cloth masks to students and a number to staff members. Um, there would be natural breaks during, uh, snack time or lunchtime, or if you're drinking. Um, obviously, those times you would be removing your, your, your mask, there may also be other built in mask breaks throughout the day. Free school students will not be required to wear a face mask, except for when they are in common areas or on the bus. Um, and part of that is looking at the guidelines for that age group and, um, daycare numbers. We're going to keep those numbers in those classrooms small, so that, um, we're not having larger classrooms, but also looking at our daycare guidelines in the state. We will also be man, doing the six foot social distancing in classrooms. So, as you said, we do have smaller class sizes, and we have good class size rooms, the space for those. So we'll be man, doing the maximum of six feet distancing in rooms, we're also looking to attempt to keep our class size to fifteen. When possible. We will also need to be looking at staggering arrival and dismissal times, uh, this will be so that we can ensure that social distancing. When we're departing on school buses, but also potentially having more parents who are coming through the drop off and pickup lines. Uh, we'll be doing screening of all staff and students when they enter the building. And anybody who is showing signs of COVID or has the, the temperature on our scanner will be removed. And then parents will be called for pickup, staff members will not be allowed into the building if they are showing any signs or have a, um. Have a fever, the school nurses will become our designated contact people for this. And, um, you can see there's the set, you have to, you know, have a test, you have to be three days without a fever. Uh, respiratory symptoms have improved, and ten days since the student has had their first symptoms. Obviously, we'll follow Department of Health and Human Service guidelines, um, and ensure that we make reporting for any positive testing. I feel like I should pause there, just because that already is a lot, I don't know if anyone has questions just from the for, first portion, or if you want me to. You go ahead and continue.
So Erica, it's Amy, I do have questions on the, um, the system we'll have in place for screening.
Yeah.
Now, I understand there'll be multiple entrances that are signed to students, so how? How will that screening and who will it be done by, like? Obviously, the nurse can't do it all, so.
Exactly.
Who would be doing that?
I, I'm currently chairing the health and, um, wellness group, so I'll just share, we haven't gotten every single detail worked out, so. Um, what we're thinking is that there would be three people at each of the, uh, of the entrances. Um, one that would be, you know, asking the questions, one that would be taking the temperatures, and then if, if at the elementary level. Um, there'd be a third person, so that, let's say a child was, uh, you know, registering a fever. Or coughing excessively or something that we didn't want at that level for kids to be, you know, removed, you know? That, so we'd have a person there that we just walk them down to the nurses area, um, we have a quarantine room, um, identified in both schools. Um, and so, you know, the child would be, the temperature, temperature would be taken again in case it was a false reading. Um, when parents would be contacted, and we would follow the, the standard protocol for if a child's sick. Uh, of course, if they're having symptoms, they're going to have to, um, you know, be tested, um, you know, in order to be able to return. To make sure that, uh, we're all set, and, um, and so that's, that's basically how the screening process will work. That way we can move, uh, folks through, we haven't identified who, because we, we really need to know how many kids are coming in. Um, uh, you know, how many homerooms, uh, teach, teachers are going to have to be in their classrooms, so this is going to be a cohort model. Students are going to come into the door that's closest to their classroom, they're going to go right to the classroom, there is no congregating. You can't come and go into a gym and then have your teachers come and get you, that's, that's not possible. Um, uh, you know, under pandemic conditions, so kids will go right to their classrooms, so the teachers are going to have to be there. Um, some classes, uh, some teachers aren't going to have, uh, a class first thing in the morning, maybe that was historically their planning period. Or, uh, they were in, uh, an I, you know, one of the unified arts groups. So it, it could be a variety of different people, Amy, we don't, we don't know yet, we really need to know, in order to plan at the next level, we really, really need to know. What, what students are coming, um, and, uh, what students will be remote learning. And then with that information, then we can put together the schedules, the cohorts, and then we can say, okay, this is who we need at a station, and this is who we have available. This, this, this is going to be in the classroom, this is, until we get that next level of information, it's really, it, you know, in, pretty difficult to answer. You know, um, the question of who, what, where, when, and, and why, so that'll be the next level, but. We can't.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Susan, I had one question about masks, um, just, you know, it says that we're going to give each, what student ma- one mask, but it also says that we will provide them. If people can't purchase them on their own, I just want to make sure that no one feels like they can't have the proper face covering, and. You know, some, part of me says we should give everyone five, so that everyone has equity in masks, but I, I don't know if that is necessary. My concern also is with people's washing facilities at home, um, and I'm sure, you know, I, I guess the teachers are going to have to sort of be on the lookout. With the mask to see if someone's mask maybe isn't totally clean, to give them one of the paper ones.
I think that was my concern as well, a- a- as the mother of two boys, I know that everything tends to go in the bottom of their backpack. So I just want, I, but I, it, I, we don't know how to, to let people know, unless we. Unless Susan, we say, we ask you to pay for masks for everybody? Like, how would we go about that, do we have to make a?
Like, how would we go about that? Do we have to make a policy?
I, I can't remember which committee this recommendation came from. In terms of just providing one for students, I can't remember what committee that was. But, um, I can remember the idea and the conversation, and it was that most students, um, want to be able to pick their own mask. And, um, and so, uh, if we provide them with five, then they might be not be used. And so we would be spending taxpayer money on something that's just gonna be in the back of a backpack and never used because they have a preference for a different style, uh, of mask than the one that we're providing. So that was really what the one mask was about. And then the conversation turned to, you know, well, what about, um, you know, maybe kids that come from, from a household where, you know, financially, you know, they've been devastated by this pandemic, you know, and they can't afford it. You know, we didn't want that to be an issue. So that's, that's why that piece was added. So in the survey that goes out to parents, again, this is to keep, you know, everything like really confidential and, um, invisible to everybody, right? We don't want people to know who's getting masks and who doesn't. We didn't want all, all the kids that couldn't afford to have masks be wearing paper, and then everybody else gets to have cloth masks, you know? We just, we don't want in any way for it to be obvious, you know, what people's circumstances are. You know, when they walk through our doors, you know, every child, you know, is equal. And we don't want anything to, to, uh, call attention to somebody's socioeconomic background or, or the family situation. So that, that's why we put this part in. So when the survey goes out, it's gonna ask parents, you know, no, obviously, you know, are, are, are you comfortable sending your, your child here? You know, for each student, they'll, they'll have to enter in, um, an answer. Or if they're going to be remote, they're gonna be asked again because we didn't get a high response rate on the transportation. So we're gonna have to ask the transportation question again because we can't move to the next level of planning if we don't know how many kids are gonna take the bus. And then the third question's gonna be, do they need masks for their child? And if they do, then we will provide them in a very, um, um, quiet way.
Susan, you articulated my concerns very, very, very well, and I think the plan is an excellent one.
All right, so that brings us to the contact monitoring. And part of that we already partially discussed is, um, with students pre case group being in cohorts, that helps us to establish who is who. There'll also be one way traffic, full hallways that we, you know, wanting to be in the same direction. They're not other. Devices have also been ordered, and, um, we're also looking at iPads for the younger kiddos. Uh, the new devices for staff have been, have been coming in, and I know staff members are picking up those devices so that we can repurpose those devices for, um, other students or other staff members who may need those. Uh, for cleaning and sanitizing, we'll be following guidelines for cleaning and sanitizing. Um, but that also means that we will need to limit the access to the building. After school hours, we'll be needing to clean and sanitize the building, which means we will not be able to have programs such as, you know, Link Together, Extreme Air, or other after school programming into the building because our, um, staff will need to be able to clean the space for the next day. Buses will also be treated with, uh, sanitizing agents by the bus company. I think that's the end of my section. If there's other questions about health and safety.
So this is Jana. That brings us to the, um, the tactical matters section, which is kind of the operational overview. A lot of the areas that we've looked at in my committee, which has been the operations committee, have, um, provided, um, some informed information for the other segments that we've discussed relative to, you know, PPE and things like that. We were looking at, at getting those things. They're looking at the recommendations for the quantities and, and, and how we, um, are gonna use those things. So a couple of additional things that fall underneath the operations group, of course, are, you know, we've already touched on the school opening. We're gonna delay the opening to allow people time to learn the new protocols and the safety measures that are, that are gonna be in place. It's gonna look and it's gonna feel different, and we wanna give people every opportunity to adjust to what is, to what is going to be required to do this safely. Transportation is another piece. We have been working extensively with the bus company to, um, work various scenarios. As you know from our preliminary information, uh, social distancing on our buses is simply not possible because of the fact that we have a limit, limiting factor in the, our ability to gain and, to gain or purchase another bus and our driver situation. So what we are gonna be doing is encouraging parents who have the ability to transport their children to do so. For, but however, transportation will be available to all students as needed. We just won't be able to guarantee social distancing on the bus. We will do everything we can to ensure that, given our ridership, um, by alternating seats or by having people separate, having families sit together and others not. But we wanna make it clear that that's just not something that we can guarantee to families that we can socially distance. Therefore, parents are encouraged to, and required to have their child wash hands and sanitize their hands before they get onto the buses. Masks will be required on the buses at all times, um, in order for a student to act, to participate this way. Um, we're gonna request and require social distancing at bus stops, and masks will need to be, um, as I mentioned, worn at all times for every rider on the bus. Erica mentioned the professional treatment. There's a long lasting agent that can be applied to the interiors of the bus that will not, um, have any impact on the materials in the bus. Um, so we will be, that will be an additional service that first student is coordinating on our behalf to ensure that that is done for all of our buses. Does, and there's a lot with transportation. Uh, does anyone have any questions before I go on to food service or meals?
Jana, can I, this is Amy. I have a question. On the cleaning of the buses, you mentioned a, a certain type of sanitizer, which would this be something new to our district that we're using?
It, it is not a product that we have used. First student, um, as you know, we contract our transportation. So they're looking at agents that work with, yeah, um, all of their, um, there are certain things, in other words, that would void a warranty on a bus, certain agents they can't use. They obviously wanna avoid a bleach material. There are certain things they're looking at. So they've evaluated quite a few, according to Sandra Rowe, who's our coordinator, um, transportation coordinator. They've evaluated many agents and they've worked very closely, um, with manufacturers of the buses and with, um, health and safety experts to come up with two, they had two products they recommended. The one that we, they, they mentioned we could choose which one. The one we chose is, we said to them, you tell us what you recommend that will be the safest for our kids and, and the delivery method, um, for getting that sanitized because obviously that's the direction we wanna go. So, um, it's a product called, and I'm probably gonna pronounce it wrong, I think it's called Zoonoo. Z O O N O. But it is a specially formulated, um, agent, and I believe it's being used in other types of transportation, you know, public transport, subways, that kind of thing.
And will this be an additional cost for our district?
It will. Um, it'll, it'll work out to about another, um, another $200 a month, um, for the sanitizing. So we're figuring, depending on how, how long into the year we go, it could be up to another like $2,500 annually over and above our transportation contract.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Janet, it's Gary. Um, will there be any time change based on the, um, the needs for some of the transportation? Will there be a time for school opening and dismissal?
That's a really good question, Gary. And as Susan alluded to earlier, we, we are, um, still working out some of those finalized details. Obviously, if we have a large portion of our population that chooses to, to stay remote, we'd have fewer students we have to onboard in the morning and in the evenings. But we are looking at, at, um, diff, you know, maybe shifting start times to allow extra time in the morning, extra time in the afternoon. But that, again, we haven't fleshed all of those details out yet. We're gonna have to see how, how we are able, once we get some data from parents as to what their choices are, I think we'll have, um, better opportunity to make a more informed decision about that. Did that, did that get your question, Gary?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Anyone else on transportation, or shall I go right on to the food? We're probably all hungry right now. So school meals, uh, they, they will be served in the classroom. They would be delivered to classrooms. Students would eat in their classrooms, um, breakfast, snacks, and lunches. While we're still, again, fleshing out many details, it, it appears that it's probably gonna look more like an ordering situation where parents or families would order the meals in advance. We also would have some capacity for students who hadn't had the opportunity or the means to order in advance. So no child will go hungry during the day, even if they haven't placed their order. We'll have something for them, um, and that we will be able to provide. But in, we'll be encouraging families to look a little bit ahead to help so that we can have these things trade up. The trays will, um, they are all the utensils, um, the trays, we'll, we'll all be disposable. Um, and they will have to be individually wrapped in the kitchen and taped and delivered to the classroom so that they remain, um, they remain fresh and sanitized. We're also gonna need to purchase some extra equipment to help us, um, maintain temperature on cold foods such as milk. We wanna make sure that we maintain the proper serving temperature as we're delivering to classes. For remote learners, meals will be available for pickup. We're gonna consolidate all the pickups of meals to one school, however, just to make it so a little easier on our, um, food service staff. So those would be able to be picked up at the elementary school, but they will be available to remote learners. So we, as I said, we hit, we are looking at a lot of, um, a lot of details surrounding that and how it would, how it will play out. But do you have any other general questions that I, maybe I didn't touch on, or? Okay, and that brings us down to the, uh, teaching and learning section, um, which is the, kind of the, the goal of all of this, I suppose.
So good, good evening, everyone. This is my piece. I just wanna say that, uh, sometimes we forget to capture in all of this that we're, we're trying to make the most of a difficult situation, right, with this plan? And I think there's a lot of good thinking that is presented in this plan and, uh, certainly a lot of input from, um, a broad constituency. And, and I, I just wanna thank, having come from a, another district and, uh, not having to do this somewhere else, but having talked to a lot of my colleagues, just thank, uh, Dr. Givens for our leadership in putting these committees together. I think that the work that's come out of these committees has been, uh, has been very good and very thoughtful, even though we still, we still have a lot of work left to do. The structure of it has been really inclusive, and I think, uh, kudos to Dr. Givens for, for organizing us in this way. I think it's been really productive. So the teaching and learning part of this proposal really kinda summarizes most of what, uh, has already come up. A few more details, but we'll, we'll sort of drill down on those a bit. So first and foremost, just to be really clear for everyone, uh, we are, uh, recommending a four one model of instruction and planning. And that means for people who are listening at home, that means that teachers and students, Monday through Thursday, full day of school. Uh, on Friday, students will be remote learners on Friday. They'll be doing their work, um, away from the school building while teachers continue to plan and work out, uh, to do professional development, professional learning, et cetera. Want to reiterate that remote learning options will be available for any student who wishes to do so. What we are asking, however, is that, um, families are going to have to choose either a full remote or a full in-person learning model of instruction and commit to it for the year. And that is going to be part of our survey, again, if, if the plan is approved. Uh, and we're asking families to make that decision by the end of the day on Monday, August 3rd. Again, this information is critical to all of the work groups in order to drill down and do, um, the additional work, the detailed work that will need to be done to finalize, uh, the return for school, to school. Finalized at that point. Um, and Amy asked the question earlier about students who choose remote learning having access to the same program. You know, it's really going to depend on how many are coming, which teachers we have available to us, uh, remotely, uh, or in person. And so while we imagine that the K to eight cohort groupings will be, you know, pretty good, they'll be, they should be pretty, uh, similar, if not identical. Uh, high school poses a little bit of a different challenge, uh, just because of the way the high school works with course offerings, with, uh, teacher qualifications for teaching courses. So, uh, really, until we know, uh, which students will be remote for particular classes, we won't really be able to get into the, the details of that. So it's quite possible at the high school that we'll have virtual learning options that will either, you know, replace courses that are running at the high school or, or will supplement them in some way. Uh, you know, our thinking with that is the more we can have, the more contact our teachers have with our students, the better. So that's our first option, uh, even in the remote learning environment. We wanna make that happen wherever we can. But we recognize that there's going to be some logistical considerations, uh, particularly when you get to the high school level. Along those same lines, we, you know, superintendents, uh, all around us and the school districts have been trying to, uh, coordinate, um, wherever they can. CCO School of Technology hasn't really, uh, released any details or provided us with any specifics as of today. It's on our understanding, they have a meeting tonight where they're gonna share, um, their thoughts about, you know, what they hope to do. So until we have that information, we're not really sure what it means for our SST students as well. Uh, but we're hopeful that they're gonna be able to access, access that program, uh, as well. We mentioned that the first week of school for students, uh, will really be devoted to transitioning back, really addressing some of the social emotional issues, uh, getting them comfortable with new routines, uh, protocols, you know, moving about the building, um, help, helping to clean because we're all, we're all gonna be doing that, uh, in this environment. So, uh, one of the things I wanted to point out there as well is that, um, getting the kids back from the teaching and learning committee's view, uh, one of the things we talked about that we think is really important is that we begin right away to build capacity with our teachers in those additional days and also with our students, um, and also with parents. We want to make available as many resources and we wanna train folks, um, as well as we can in the tools that we think are the best for remote learning. So while we're getting back here and we're, we're engaging in school eventually after a soft start, uh, we also wanna build that capacity. So when the inevitable happens and we do have to go to remote learning, that we're in a better position to do, uh, to do a good job offering a quality experience in that remote environment. We did, uh, we did decide that we will remain, uh, with Google Classroom as our primary platform for delivering, uh, remote instruction for teaching and learning. We've also determined that we will be switching to Zoom for our. for our teleconferencing tool due to some of our, the limitations we observed and the feedback we received about the Google Meets tool. So again, that the opportunity to have teachers before students at the beginning of the year, a soft start with students will provide us with the opportunity to sort of roll up some of those tools, do some training with our students and with our teachers so that when that happens, we're best prepared to do so smoothly. After school activities, we're gonna limit those to only those that can be offered virtually with adult monitoring. So Astronaut Society Model UN and some of those other clubs, chess club, etc., to the degree that it's safe and practical. Varsity sports that are low and or moderate risk, as long as they adhere with the NHIAA expectations and guidelines will be considered. You know, the keys there are are really safety first and foremost for our kids, for our student athletes, but also the practicality of being able to to participate in that, whatever that model looks like that's proposed by the association. Questions?
Hey David, this is Amy. Can you just define soft start?
Sure, I think soft start, soft start means that our students and our students are coming back and the first goal in the return is to get students comfortable with routines, with the new protocols, to 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 touch base with them, to make sure that they're okay. It may involve some of those things that Dr. Givens was talking about earlier, like, you know, what are we doing to celebrate our fifth graders, our rising sixth graders or or our or our rising ninth graders, you know? What making kids and and our staff feel comfortable with the new protocols and the new routines. So soft start means that is first and foremost the priority on the return. Second is the return to learning.
Dave, this is Kim. Can you talk about, you know, a six, seven, eighth grade cohort model? What that would look like so people understand it?
Sure. Basically, what it would mean is that the group of students that we put together would remain together for the entire day in one classroom. So teachers would be moving to the cohort as opposed to the cohort moving around the building. So in six, seven and eight, kids really are in one place. Teachers are coming to them. The details of what that might look like are still yet to come. We're gonna work on on what that will look like. Again, it will depend on, you know, who the teachers are that we have available in the in the school as opposed to the remote teachers and which kids are gonna be in the building.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Hi Dave, this is Mike. Let's take that from ninth through 12th. And we won't be cohorting there, obviously, because high school kids have different classes. You know, it's just impossible to cohort them. They will be. The idea is, I guess, is they'll be moving about the building in an orderly fashion. So there's reduction of, you know, grouping people together and, you know, would be generally using their same work areas and, you know, sterilizing and all that. One thing I think the folks at home would really need or really need to understand is that the concept of remote learning at the high school isn't, you know, live streaming the in-school class to those kids who choose remote learning. That's not what we're thinking. Is that correct?
Well, you know, I think that, you know, first of all, I think it's important to say that that we have to work with our teachers to make sure that this plan and any implications for, you know, how they're expected to work with kids, what that day looks like is is gonna have to be, you know, a discussion. You know, there's gonna be have to be an agreement with the teachers association. But so I'm not really sure, Michael, yet what exactly it will work with look like because the easiest thing to say is we could just stream it out and people who are home could be part of the same experience. That that's, it's not that simple, but there may be some other ways that we haven't looked at yet. I think we're we're trying to drill that down on some of that in the teaching and learning committee. A couple of really good teachers who are very tech savvy with the tools that are available. So I I'm not comfortable in saying we've explored all of that and ruled everything out yet. But it is challenging to do that. So I think generally speaking, remote learning would look different. It would look like teachers assigned to be remote teachers accessing those kids differently than what's going on in the in the other model of being in the in the school. So curricularly, we would hope it would be the same, no different than if you had two different teachers teaching, you know, the same course. The content, core content, the standards are the same, but the experience might be a little bit different based on the teacher's style. But at the high school where we can't match people up like that, where we don't have a remote instructor for the second section, that's where you're gonna see things like potentially a virtual course be offered to those students in in place of that experience. Those are all possibilities at this point.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
David, Sammy again. When you just said now a virtual class being offered, do you mean like Velax?
So I Velax is certainly one of those options. The other is we do have a contract with Virtual High School. So there's some virtual offerings with with Virtual High School as well. So yes, those are two possibilities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the teaching and learning section? Or any other section for that matter?
Actually, Susan, I do. I just thought of one. Where we, you're gonna be sending out a survey to parents where they need to state whether they want their children to do remote or in in-person learning. And there's the the date of August 3rd. Is that, just so parents are aware, this is something that will be final once they return that or not? If what if, say, a week after they send it in, they they change their mind?
No, we're asking them to make a final decision. So thank you for asking. If the board approves this recommendation from the steering committee, then tomorrow, this document will be sent out to all families along with the survey. We're also gonna have Thursday night a meeting for parents similar to this so that we can walk through again what this means so that there's another opportunity for them to hear just what you've you've heard tonight in case they're not chimed in so that they, you know, we're maximizing the opportunity for them to understand, you know, what the safety protocols are and how, to the best of our, you know, knowledge at this point, we're gonna approach on-campus learning and they can make a decision. But yeah, we can't, at this point, we really need to know what the decision is because we can't move forward and we can't, we can't. It 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 takes an enormous amount of time to thoughtfully put together schedules and cohorts, figuring out what entrances kids come in, what exits they're gonna go out. I mean, the level of coordination at this point is really intensified and we can't keep shifting gears. You know, now's the time. We listened to parents, as you know, last week so that we would make sure that we were giving them the information in this document that was would, to the degree that we could, you know, satisfy their concerns and worries and answer their questions so they could make an informed decision. But yeah, this would, this would be, you know, obviously, on the other hand, if 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 a family gets sick or somebody gets COVID, then 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 they can't come on campus. As we said, there might be a case-by-case basis for some kind of a shift, but we we have to know what electives we can offer, how many kids are coming to the electives, if all kids are in that elective are electing remote and we need to tell the teacher that that elective elective is remote versus in class. It just requires so much planning, interconnected planning that we really do have to know at this point, you answered those questions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was a little concerned with that, too. I know it's a lot to ask of parents without them having a complete plan, but it's a catch 22. You can't do a complete plan without having information. So I understand the necessity of it. If you might humor me in making an implementation suggestion, which I try not to ever do, but I would just make sure that the survey is accessible like for everyone. I think there's issues in the past of being able to access the document without a Gmail account. And the others, I would just, I would suggest that we blast this out in as many channels as possible. You send out a reminder, the principals, the call now, if we can use that, channel 13. I mean, if we really want to get as many people returning this within such a short period, I think we really just need to send it out as many channels as we can.
Absolutely. We were gonna send this document out to the press tomorrow to, and then every day we'll we'll send a reminder, whether it's through the through the voicemail system, you know, in other words, the way that we call, you know, school cancellations. We'll use every method and we'll do it every day. So absolutely.
Good to hear.
Yep. Okay, so, you know, this in summary, you know, reopening our schools involves many, many layers of planning as we've just talked about. And we'll continue to develop the plan over the next month with increasing levels of detail. This won't be the last communication. When we get the next level of detail worked out, then we'll communicate that out in the same way we have here, you know? We'll we'll again offer opportunities for this for parents to hear this and and ask questions so that we know what what's on their minds so we can be providing them responses to their concerns as we go to to different levels of of our planning process. So in order to move to the next level, you know, we need to know which children are returning to on-campus learning and those that will be learning remotely. We also will need to know if families need transportation through our busking system in the morning, in the afternoon and or the afternoon, and also how many additional cloth masks a family may need if they are struggling financially. So all of that will be in the survey. And then, you know, we ask folks to get the message out. You know, we're gonna do our best to send it out in every way that we can, but tell your neighbors and let everyone know it's important. And then we'll also be letting folks know that we're having, you know, a staff meeting from 4:30 to 5:30 on Thursday and then for for parents from six to seven. You know, also would like to just say that if if any parent out there has any questions about their specific child, reach out to your building principal. They're here to answer your questions. We're here all summer with the exception of a few days here for for vacations. You know, we want to help you in any way, you know, to make the best decision for you and your family. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank all the working group and steering committee members for all their efforts over the course of the last six weeks. We tried to give you as much detail as possible. We know other school districts are doing things that are different than we are and they're doing that because their circumstances are different. They may have higher cases of COVID. They have oftentimes multiple towns that they have to coordinate transportation for. And they have, you know, smaller or older buildings that limit the number of 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 students or or children that they can have in their buildings. So they're going to modified schedules. We are trying to keep our programming as consistent with what families and students are used to as we can, only making changes where necessary to accommodate health and safety needs. So our plan is very specific to what we heard from our families, the feedback that we got. And we're gonna do our best to provide a high-quality learning in spite of the fact that we're in a pandemic. It's not gonna be the same as if we could provide you with the traditional learning opportunity. But it's gonna be the very best that we can provide you and it's gonna be personalized to the needs of our our students here in Newmarket. So thank you very much for taking the time to walk through this proposal and we look forward to to hearing from the board.
Okay, does there any other questions from the board? I want to thank everybody again for appearing at yet a another late meeting and and all the work that's come to this point. The the number of hours that are put in, you know, may not be evident from that brief document, but, you know, everything you see there, it took, it took, it took a team effort to get get there. And thanks again to Dr. Givens and the whole team for dedicating their time this summer, the many board members, all the board members who are on these committees, students, teachers, administrators, thank you all. If there are any further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this proposed plan.
Mike, I will make that motion and I want to reiterate, well, I will reiterate it in a minute. I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Kim Shelton made the motion. Elizabeth McKinney seconded. Is there any further discussion?
What I wanted to say is a sort of echoing Gary's comments from the the early part of our meeting. I think this is as thorough as a plan that we could have at this time. I know my working group has met extensively. I know the other ones have too, and I can see the evidence of our work in this final document. So I appreciate that very much. And with that, relax.
I I would add just one more thing, if I could, that we do have town halls, I think, are gonna be scheduled. I think we may have mentioned that already, but I'll say it again. Susan, I'll probably get the time. So I think the tomorrow night, Wednesday, I think from five to six is the staff town hall. And then the following night, Thursday, the 30th, is the is a is a current town hall from five to six again.
Actually, they're both gonna be on Thursday. So and they're gonna be a half an hour apart. So we're doing the staff meeting from 4:30 to 5:30 on Thursday and then the parents from six to seven. And the links to all of that will go out again with the information tomorrow and everywhere that we can possibly advertise it.
Great, thanks for clarifying that. And folks, get your get your questions in. This is a continuing process and we appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, I just, Mike, would like to echo what Kim said and maybe kind of shortcut some of the the dialogue that may be coming. I think people need to realize that this is a very, it's a high-level preliminary plan to get us started and after tonight, well, it's already been going on, but it'll continue to get get more detailed. I know everyone's gonna want to know the absolute specifics on every single item, but until we get that data back from the from the staff and or from the parents, rather, and get this approved, we really just can't give more details. There'll be more coming and I look forward to future meetings and getting more details ourselves.
Further? Okay, so we have a motion. We have, and it was seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. We have to do this by a roll call. Mike Caston, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is, I believe, does anybody have that up? I think we had the manifests on there.
Yeah, approval of manifest.
It it was emailed to you. I'm looking back, but see if I can find the time it was emailed. Teresa emailed that.
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
Okay.
I guess I'll do this. So just to clarify, this is manifest from June 26 through July 24. And it's a total of $3,995,054.35.
That's that's what I have, Gary.
Did you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the amount again. Can you, I'm just.
Three million nine hundred ninety five thousand fifty four dollars and thirty five pennies.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll second that motion, Kim Shelton.
I I'm sorry, I didn't actually make a motion, but I I make the payroll manifest for July twenty eighth totaling three million nine hundred ninety five thousand fifty four dollars and thirty five cents.
Now that there's a motion on the floor, I will second the motion.
Is there any comment or discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Mike Keston, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. And lastly, I think on our agenda are some staffing updates. Susan?
Yes, I sent you an update just before the meeting started, so I don't. I figured you wanted the would want the latest. So if you have that document, can you just give me a thumbs up so I know that it's in front of you if I don't? Okay, good. So those folks that are in red are the ones that are new since you met last. We were gonna go over this with you on Thursday, but we ran out of time. So I've I've included those folks as well as ones that have been hired since. Since last Thursday. So we hired an interim. Person, as you know, we're in the middle of this very difficult time for planning, and there was a hiring freeze that the town administrator put on. So that kind of delayed. Us moving forward with hiring of this position. So just on an interim basis, we've hired David Crissy. To work with us through the summer and maybe, you know, September till we have a permanent replacement. So that we can get any modifications to our facilities done. We can move forward with more an article work and close out the building project, et cetera. We have a lot on our plate. So. Dave has a a master's degree. From the University of Massachusetts in Business Administration and Operations Management. He also has a bachelor's degree in business. David has worked in multiple environments over the course of his career, including schools in the past, real estate. Just about, it looks like most any kind of a facility, including nursing facilities, boys and girls clubs. So he's had a lot of experience with a lot of different types of buildings. So we're very fortunate to have him. Working with us this summer as we plan for reopening of schools. So that's David Crissy, and he'll be with us until we have our permanent replacement. Which continues to be the shared services model. In terms of staff, we had a resignation since since the last meeting, and so that should be in red. So Jamie Ray has resigned. And we've hired Allison Tessary, and she comes to us with a bachelor's degree in music. Band. She has played in orchestras herself and has played both wind instruments as 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 well as brass, and we're very, very excited to have her join us. She has. Have somebody that that has the whole range of of instrumental background to to bring with us to help our students advance. She's a new teacher. She's done some student teaching at the high school level and at the elementary level, but this will be her first teaching experience as a certified professional. So. Excited to have her come aboard. Christina Bouvier is a really a returning teacher. She did student teaching here. She has nine years of experience teaching. Her area of expertise is art. This year she filled in a long term subposition for us in computer science. And so she'll be joining us as a part time art teacher. This upcoming year. So we're we're pleased to welcome her back. We had a resignation. In the math department at the junior senior high school with a person that's changing professions, moving away from teaching and. Replacing him is Brent Scott, and Scott is also transitioning from a different profession. So this will be his first year of teaching. He comes from the private sector. His background is in IT and, you know, data and systems. And he has a very strong background in mathematics and made a decision a couple of years ago to change his profession. And so he will be joining us as a first year teacher in math department, and he's very, very excited. Also, we just received yesterday a resignation from a social studies teacher, so we will gear up to try to find a replacement for Allison Ayaruso. We hired Karen Hinckley to replace our first grade teacher. That resigned in June, and we're very excited that Karen's an existing staff member. I think she's been with Newmarket. Eighteen to twenty years. She's been a case manager. Before she was a case manager, she was, I believe she was a first grade teacher or lower elementary school teacher, so she wants to return to the regular education classroom. So Karen is. Is going to be filling the position in the first grade. And Emily Favolario is going to be replacing Shayna Thorell as a special education case manager. We're excited to have her join us. She is, she has a master's degree from Southern New Hampshire University and a bachelor's degree in elementary education. So we're really excited to have her come on board. She's relatively new into in teaching, though she does have a years of experience. And we're happy to have her joining our staff. In addition, we have. Who will be replacing Karen Hinckley, who was was moved. Into first grade, and she comes with us as a certified teacher with some experience, quite a bit of experience, actually. She's been a special education teacher. She taught in elementary regular education. She was actually a building principal for a while, and she transitioned back to the classroom. We're fortunate to have her. She's moving into the area. And so she has quite an extensive background in education. She has her master's degree from Granite State College and her bachelor's degree at Keene State College, and she is, as I said, certified as a teacher, general education. Special educator and a principal. So we're very excited to have. You know, a very seasoned educator joining us as well. So those are the teaching positions that we filled. We did fill the last math tutor position. Today, so Madeline De Rosier will be joining us, and that means that at our elementary school. Other than some paras and other positions that we have not advertised. For teaching there. We did have a resignation at the junior senior high school, the administrative assistant who began this year. Has has resigned, and so we have that position open and we are advertising for it. So that's the update. The last time. We met and we reviewed staffing changes.
Any any thoughts or questions from the board? Hearing none. I guess we're gonna move on. I don't think we have any other business on the agenda. Susan, anything else?
No, just the non-meeting.
Yep. Okay, and in terms of next school board meeting, do we wanna wanna talk about that?
Mike, you had mentioned, or somebody, maybe it wasn't you, mentioned at the last meeting. Not, you know, postponing having our retreats. Until, you know, after we open school, which I think is a is a good idea, given all the work that's before us. But maybe we could just use those, keep those same dates and hold hold meetings in place of those regular meetings. I know that there's perhaps some policy pieces. We know that there's gonna be another level of planning we'll want to be communicating out, and so maybe we could just hold those same dates. And just. Just since they're on our calendars anyways.
Personally, I'd like to return to weekly meetings so we can get an update on the planning process, as well as discuss any potential policy changes. I know we're gonna need to change the calendar.
Well, next week I intend on taking a nice and well deserved vacation, so.
Fair enough. It's definitely well deserved. Perhaps a week after.
Yeah, I think we're scheduled on the twelfth or something. Somewhere around there.
I think it's the thirteenth and the twentieth, Susan.
Yeah.
I thought we were scheduled later than that.
No, I believe it was the thirteenth.
Yeah. I I can look on my calendar. I I have it.
We try during the week then?
The thirteenth, yes. Thursday, the thirteenth, we have a meeting and the twentieth. They're both on Thursdays, yeah.
So that's that's Gary consecutive weeks after after Susan comes back anyways. And and we can decide, I suppose, on the twentieth, if if we need to meet that next week, Gary, on the twenty, you know, maybe on the twenty seventh, and see see what what's in front of us at that point. And five o'clock, unless we unless we agree otherwise. How's that?
Five o'clock?
Yep.
Okay.
I think I think those were earlier for the retreats, but maybe five is a good reasonable time.
Yeah.
For a meeting.
Yep.
Five is good with me.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'd like to discuss about live meetings again. I think I know there's a concern about. Resources I'm willing to provide. All the sanitizer needed, as well as disposable masks. I know this, the budget committee was gonna be meeting at the school, so it seems as if. The building's already set up for it. I know there's some concern about the number of people who may try to participate. Think we could check on. Emergency for. Or that may allow the limited for attendees. I just feel that we need to provide the, we need to return to live meetings, we need to provide the opportunity to hear the public in a more normalized setting.
And more normalized thing in a global pandemic.
Well, if we're asking people to return to school, I think it's important.
We haven't asked them. We're we're going through the process right now, and every day it's a change. That's nice, Gary. That's lovely. Okay, you, whatever.
I didn't.
I, well, why, what I don't understand is the the budget committee was gonna meet at the high school.
Yeah, they, yeah, we we did not, I mean, there was a scheduling staff through there because. On Friday, I I had thought that that space was available in at the cafeteria, but apparently it's being used for distributing the laptops. So we we did not, in fact, meet, and so that meeting is gonna be rescheduled. But, you know, there's a key distinction between the budget committee, which is off season right now, they're not considering budgets for next year. And the school board, which is considering, you know, this reopening plan. I wouldn't expect many people to show up at the budget committee meeting at all.
But but they could if they wanted to, though, right?
They could, but we'd have a problem if we held it in the cafeteria, and that you've gotta maintain spacing and, you know. And if there's not enough seats, you can't, you can't have the meeting. You gotta, you gotta have enough, you have enough seats for anybody who wants to attend.
I'm not entirely sure that's true with the. Where's the order? I think maybe we we can counsel to check on that. I know section three allows us, part of us to meet remotely if we decide to.
Yeah, I mean, this, I I don't have it memorized, Gary, so if we wanna, if you wanna check on that, that's fine. But if if it is the case that we gotta make a seat for everybody, you know, this, it it just create, it can create problems, and I think maybe problems for. Susan and her team and her staff going into late August. I mean, they they need to be concentrated on getting set enough for school, not for not for board meetings, I think, and, you know, and look, and I'll emphasize. If we do continue our remote options, as we've done all along, there's ample opportunity for people to speak, and they can speak. As as the as as a as a as a community member did at our last meeting. So, you know, it's a balance. I mean, I think the last thing we want to be doing is putting additional work on. The school employees' plates in late August.
No, I would agree with you. I just question how much work that actually is. Why don't I contact the School Board Association, Hampshire School Board Association? See if they're understanding that ruling or that emergency order, see what our options are. I know setting up the gym would be a matter of pulling out the bleachers and setting up some tables. We have to see what Tim's availability is or his set of time. But I I don't think we'd be using a lot of school resources, but.
Well, it may be that, but I I wouldn't jump to that conclusion either, because I think you'd be talking, you know, about, you know, sanitizing the whole space. I mean, you maybe, you know, as Jan is shaking her head, maybe I think she mentioned that last time. So, look, I'm personally, I'd like I'd like to meet, you know, but I just, I don't, I I'm trying to strike a balance personally about, you know, wanting to meet in person, but not. Overburdening and already overburdened staff with yet another, you know, thing that they gotta, they gotta be mindful of. They'd have to, I presume we'd have to check everybody in, just like we check students and staff in right now, and.
I'm sure we'll find someone to do that. What I can do to alleviate those concerns and present them to the board, and we can go from there.
Right, since we aren't gonna, we aren't going to meet again, you know. Between now, I guess, and the thirteenth, I mean. You know, I don't, I'm not sure how we take a vote on whether we meet in person or not.
Because we wouldn't be in person.
Gotcha. Okay, well, I appreciate Gary reaching out and finding that out. We'll take it up on the thirteenth and and see.
Pushing forward on this, it's never gonna.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, we're sitting here talking about sending the children back to school. I think if it's done safely and. I mean, I feel comfortable meeting in a setting like that. So I think that the board should be able to. At least offer it, and I know, like I saw the other day, Steve Fornier, is it Steve? Yes. He was doing a meet, the town council meeting, and he was in the. At the district at in the. I forget what room, but he was in a room in the town council man, town council people were on their computers calling in, you know, virtually. And you could see both of them at the same time. Is that something, if some school board members don't feel comfortable? That could be offered as well?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how they did that. Are you saying that the that the council members were remote, but but the town administrator was at the building?
Yes, exactly. It was him and another person. I don't know who it was, a woman. And then you could see that the all the town council. Were, you know, remote on their computers. You could see them. I I don't know how they did it, but it was their last meeting, I believe.
Gary, you're talking, if, just to make sure I'm right, you're talking about something different. You're talking about us actually being there, right? You know, that's.
Well, I know the next town council meeting, some of the council members are gonna be there in person, some are gonna meet remotely.
Okay, and 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 there may be some sort of exception, but the last I knew that the area at the town hall downstairs only accommodated, I think. Okay, um, and, and, and there may be some sort of exception, but the last I knew, that the area at the town hall downstairs only accommodated, I think, twelve folks in the public with a six, six-foot spacing, um, but maybe they're doing some sort of hybrid where they're, um, I don't know, check, check that out, I, I'd be interested to hear, hear what it says. Look, I wanna be clear, it's not about us, you know, sending kids to school and not wanting to meet ourselves, I don't think that's, that's the case, at least it isn't for me anyways. I, I gladly meet, I've already done it, I did it two weeks ago when I met with it, with the building committee. Um, again, it wasn't expected to be a lot of folks there, there hasn't been all the way along. But it, my sole concern is just keeping another task on, on a, on a burden, you know, staff.
All met, at, at some point, we've all met live at this point. When I say that I think we should hold off, it is out of concern for the cost for our staff, and I don't wanna be around the public right now, we don't know, unless you can give me a detailed plan of what's going to happen. I don't think I need to expose my family right now. So, that's my concern.
I think if I can just share that in the same time, our schools aren't just sitting here empty, ready for kids to come in. We have books all over the place, we have classrooms with furnitures in the hall, we have things that are shipped in, you know, that just, they sit there, and then we count them, and, and so, we're not really set up for public. We don't think in terms of the public coming in and using our facilities. So, as Mike said, right now, we are uh, inventorying books and everything, and we use our big common areas to do that. So, um, it's not, you know, can we do that? Yes, we can, again, stop what we're doing, we can take everything and put it all away and put it in another location. But it's, it's, it's right now, everyone is feeling uh, the pressure to focus all of our time and attention on, on planning, measuring, you know, uh, figuring out how we're going to accommodate SST once we get their plan, which we don't have yet. And so, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, as Mike said, we don't normally think about being open to the public when we close in the summer. That's what operations, you know, has kind of whole reign of the building, and, and they're, you know, moving things around, and we don't think about, oh, kids being here, so we have to make sure that uh, we clean up a project we're working on, when we know tomorrow morning you can just come in and start working, because you don't have the public there that's gonna be, you know, walking through a particular area, so it's, it's just in the summertime, we're just not geared for doing that, in this particular year, we just have an awful lot of, of things that we're trying to focus our attention on, so if, you know, certainly the board wishes, you know, for us to um, create space, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly abide by your wishes. But it, you know, we would very much appreciate being able to, you know, just keep on keeping on, and keeping a strong focus on reopening schools and, and uh, using all of our staff towards that primary purpose.
Gary, you're on mute.
Thanks, Mike, um, SST has been brought up a few times, and how many kids go to SST, I'm starting to get a concern that this is a bigger uh, part of the plan than I know it should be, or I, I, I've heard it to be, I just don't know how many kids are included in that.
I, I don't know the numbers of students who are enrolled in SST, off the top of my head, I'd, I'd have to ask.
Probably just matters on the programming too, it depends on how they offer it, who's wearing masks, they, from what I understood from the meeting that I attended the other day, they're requiring everybody to wear masks, but not all districts are doing that, so that's the concern, and we don't, again, parents have to make the decision.
Uh, it's just come up a few times, something about SST, so I didn't know how, how, how many kids actually attend that, or how big of a part of the process that is for the plan.
I do know from our transportation conversation that there are kids that don't attend all day, so they, um, she mentioned that they, and I don't know the numbers, but she mentioned that she, they drive to SST halfway through the day, drop off some students, and pick up the ones that were there in the morning, so the numbers, I'm not sure of, but I know that there are multiple um, scheduling opportunities with that.
And with Newmarket, we've never allowed our students to drive there, we've always done transportation. I do know SST said that if we do allow our children to drive, only one child per car unless they're siblings. That's, we'd have to change policy on that for this year.
Yeah.
Gary, let us know what you find out, I guess the board will just take this up at the next meeting, we'll vote on it, and we'll move on.
That sounds reasonable.
Anything else, Susan, you were gonna say something, I cut you off.
No, I'm all set, thanks, Mike.
All right, um, I don't know if we had a mo-, yeah, we don't have a motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Were we, were we going to non-public, or not?
Non-meeting.
I mean, non-meeting, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
That's after, yep, never mind.
I can't even remember, did somebody make a motion, i- i- any event, can somebody-
I'll make a motion to adjourn, adjourn at six fifty-three PM.
Second, Gary Swanson.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye, Mike Kessin, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.